All right. Okay, well, welcome everyone and good evening. Thank you for attending the candidate forum for the Ashland School Board race. My name is Sunimi and I am the president of the League of Women Voters of Ashland and Bayfield Counties. We are a nonpartisan political organization whose main objective is to promote political responsibility through the informed and active participation of all in government at all levels, especially locally. The League is proud to be nonpartisan, neither supporting nor opposing candidates or political parties at any level of government, but always working on vital issues of concern to members and the public. On February 14th, the League celebrated its 102nd anniversary. For over 100 years, we have been working to make democracy work. This candidate forum is but one example of the important work the League promotes. I want to thank the candidates who are here tonight. Running for and holding public office is an important part of our democracy. It is a huge commitment, yet you are doing your part. Thank you. We are happy to also introduce two local students who will be our timer and our question taker for this evening. Engaging youth in this work is critical to the future of our democracy, so we are very, very pleased that they are here and volunteering tonight. Hollyanna Gore will be our timer for this evening and Abby Brew will be collecting questions. Hollyanna and Abigail, can you take a moment to introduce yourselves, starting with Hollyanna first?
Hi, I'm Hollyanna Gore. I'm a sophomore here at Ashland High School.
Thank you.
I'm Abby Brew and I'm a senior.
Thank you, Abby. Thank you, Hollyanna. Now, I'd like to introduce Linda Jorgensen. Linda is our moderator for this forum. I want to thank Linda and all the other League volunteers working this forum. Our moderator and screener were chosen because they live outside of the Ashland School District and cannot vote in this election. While the students are from the district and unable to vote yet, but hopefully they will be voting when they turn of age. With that, I'll turn it over to you, Linda, but before I do, I just want to let people know a housekeeping issue. In the chat, I want everyone to know that you will find an email. It's called ashlandforum@abcleaguevoters.org. If you have questions, that is the email you should use to submit your questions. Please do not submit them via chat. With that, Linda, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, well, good evening, everyone. I'm Linda Jorgensen. I live in Washburn. I'm moderating tonight for our league. And I welcome all of those who are listening by phone or watching on Zoom and, of course, those who've come out in the lovely spring weather to participate tonight. Tonight, we have an opportunity to assess two candidates running in the April 5th election for important positions on the Ashland School Board. They are Kelly Madei and Anne Bockler. So I want to just go over a little bit of the ground rules and our format so that everybody understands how we operate here. We're going to start, and each candidate is going to be given an opportunity to make an opening statement. Then we're going to have a question and answer period, and then we'll end up and each candidate is going to make a closing statement. So first, let me talk a little bit about the question and answer process here. All responses are time limited, so I'll announce for each question in one minute, one and a half minutes, or two minutes. And when a candidate has 30 seconds to go, our timekeeper, Hollyanna, is going to hold up a 30-second warning sheet and follow up by a "time's up" sign in red at the end. And the candidate may complete their sentence, but then they have to stop speaking. And we know that setting time limits like this are frustrating, so let me tell you why we do it. First, we want to treat both candidates equally. Second, if we don't have time limits, then we don't treat the audience fairly as well. We want to get as many audience questions answered as we can. So we know our format's not perfect, but we hope it strikes the right balance. So after the opening statements, the candidates are going to answer your questions. And we have received a number of questions already that have been emailed to us, and I thank my colleague Sharon Stewart because she's compiling all of them. You, as the audience here, also may write questions on a card and hold your hand up if you need a card or pencil, or if you've completed your card and want somebody to pick it up and deliver it up here to Sharon. If you're attending virtually, you can send your questions, and I'll give you the email address again. It was given to you by Sunimi, but I'm going to say it again. It's ashlandforum, all lowercase, at abcleaguevoters, all together, dot org, all lowercase. So Sharon's going to screen questions for any defamatory content, which we don't allow. Also, she's going to combine questions that are duplicated, but we're going to try to get as many questions as we can answered. And we are going to be running from this time until 7:30. So I'm going to read a question, and then the candidates are going to take turns answering. However, if it's a question that's addressed to a specific candidate, then I'm going to read that question to the specific person being asked. And after everyone's responded to a question, each candidate may have one additional minute for a rebuttal. After that, each candidate may have one more minute for a counterrebuttal. But you'll see as we go along that most times rebuttal is not needed, and it's very rare that we use a counterrebuttal. So I'll ask the candidates to signal me by raising their hand if they wish to offer a rebuttal. After the question and answer period, each candidate has an opportunity to make a closing statement, and we plan to finish at 7:30 tonight. So let's hear from the candidates. The candidates have decided who is going to start first in giving their opening statements, and then the reverse will be used for the candidates when they give their closing remarks. So tonight, I believe, Anne, you're going to go first. And so let me start with a question that is-
She has her opening statement.
Oh, thank you.
Do I just have two minutes?
Yes.
All right. Well, thank you, League. Thank you, everybody, for being here. It's quite a process watching all this get set up and a little intimidating seeing the pile of questions over there. I really debated how to go about the opening, if I go with specifics. And I was looking through some files, and I came across my flyer I did when I ran six years ago. And I could have used it again because it was April 5th then. I could not have gotten by with this picture. I've aged considerably in these six years that I've been on the board, so I don't know if that talks any of the stress. But the thing that stood out to me was the traits that some people that were helping me with this encouraged me to put on here. And I'm going to read them. Forward-thinking, practical, positive, dedicated, common sense approach, willing to listen, consensus builder. That was me six years ago. That's me today. That's how I function in life. That's how I function on the board. I'm a big-picture thinker. I don't get down into the nitty-gritty. I take all the sides, all the information, and I try and do what's best for the big picture, for the district, for the majority of the students, for the well-being of our students in our community. And I don't get into the drama and the emotion. I try and just be with the facts, look at the best practices, and I'm willing to listen. There's plenty of times I'll come in with, you know, thinking, oh, that's not something that makes any sense to me. And then we get this presentation on it, and we ask a few questions, and it clears right up, and then I realize, yeah, that does work. So I think of myself as being open-minded and practical, and I think that's the only way to approach this job. Thank you.
Thank you. And Kelly?
So for those of you who don't know me, I am Kelly Madei. I was born and raised in Ashland. I'm a 1999 Ashland High School alumni. Went on to go to UW Superior where I graduated with my bachelor's degree in physical education in 2005. I met my husband, who is also an Ashland alumni, and in 2004, we got married, and we now have three children in the district, one in seventh grade, one in fifth grade, and one in first grade. So we've kind of seen a lot of the district since I was little to what my kids are, you know, doing every day there now. I couldn't get a teaching job here for the life of me when I graduated college, so I went on to work for the county, and I've been there for 14 years, currently serving as their child support administrator for Ashland County. I volunteered in my children's classrooms many times. I actually look forward to getting back in there now that we can actually get back in there. I've been on the Little League Board for six years. I volunteer coached, served on our church council for one term. I guess you can say I kind of like to get involved. My husband may say too much, but I do like to get out there and get involved. I like to talk to the community. I like to know what's going on. I'm a very easy person to talk to, and I hope that that is what people are looking for, to put on this board. And I also want to say thank you all for attending virtually, by phone or here, and thank you very much to the League of Women Voters for putting this on. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to start off the questioning period. Thank you very much for your opening statements. So Anne, if you would start. What are the primary responsibilities of a school board member?
Time.
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 And that'd be a minute and a half.
All right, minute and a half. It's really more simple than people realize as far as the number of responsibilities. Our responsibility is to supervise and evaluate the superintendent, and it's to approve a strategic plan, work on the strategic plan, set the direction of the district, and then it's to put policies in place to support that. And after that, it's really a support role. It's taking in everything that's out there to help, you know, support those decisions, but it's letting the educational professionals decide how to do things. Our job is to figure out the what. What do we want to accomplish? It's the administrator and staff. It's their job to figure out the means to get there. And so we're really the cheerleaders. We're the positive voice. We're the supporters once those decisions are made. We need to back it and be there.
Thank you. And Kelly, what would you-
Can you repeat the question again?
Yes. What are your, in your mind, what are the primary responsibilities of a school board member?
In my mind, I agree with Anne about, you know, evaluating the superintendent and things like that. Those are responsibilities of the school board. However, I have a little bit different view. I believe that as an elected official on the school board, my job is to listen to people in the community. My job is to have my email and my phone line open at all times and for people to be able to be comfortable to talk to me and tell me what's going on. That goes for teachers and staff, too. I agree that our administration, you know, makes the rules and things like that, but it's the role of the school board to ask questions and represent our community, and that's what I think my role, my first and foremost role will be.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, just a quick rebuttal. Definitely, we need to listen to the community, listen to the teachers, listen to the staff. We need to get all the input, but we always need to take the big picture. So it is very difficult at times. For example, if we give a community survey and people are like, you surveyed and you didn't listen to us. Well, we need to understand as a board that's a piece of the puzzle. And so it's always really important to take all the pieces and put it together. And it's hard not to get drawn into feeling like we have to represent, but we really do need to look at the entire picture.
Do I? I get a re- One minute?
Okay. And I do agree again with Anne, and I do think you do need to look at the big picture. But I have attended school board meetings where I haven't seen any questions asked of things presented, almost like people came in and they knew what they were going to vote before they got there. And that will not happen with me. I will ask questions, and I will get answers.
Okay, thank you. Another question, and I'll start with you, Kelly. What is your age, marital status, and what do you do in your day job? And I realize that you have already answered part of that. Go ahead. You have one minute, and then Anne, you have one minute.
My age, my job, and-
Marital status.
Okay. I'm 41. I am married. I've been married for 17 years to my husband, Eric. And I am the child support administrator for Ashland County. So I supervise eight people in an office. I work with attorneys and the court system on a daily basis. I establish court orders. I do paternity genetic testing. I do budgets. I kind of do it all. Yeah, I attend court, and if anything around establishing paternity and court orders regarding children and their families, children placed out of the home in foster care or court or kinship care with family members, I'm the one they deal with.
Thank you. And Anne?
I am 52. I've been married for almost 25 years. I have two kids, one a freshman in college and one a sophomore here at Ashland High School. I am a full-time mom and volunteer. I've been that, well, most. I worked some when my son was young, but other, outside the home, but otherwise, I've been a full-time volunteer, whether it's the school board. I led the American Cancer Society Relay for Life. I chaired that for over 15 years, raised over a million dollars in my time on that. I was a founding board member of the Ashland Education Fund a few years back, just to give grants to support education initiatives in the Ashland area. I just started up a club volleyball program, got that established as a 501(c)(3) and incorporated in the state to have better support for youth volleyball in our community. I've served on many boards. Thanks, Hollyanna. I'm done. It was wise before I started listening all the answers were done.
Okay, these are questions to Kelly Madei. Social media reports you are suing the Ashland School District. Why should we vote for you to be on the school board if you are suing the school district?
Time.
And that'll be a one and a half.
Okay.
Minute question.
First of all, I appreciate that question from whoever submitted it because it has been on social media. My family has never, nor have I, ever filed a lawsuit against the school district. That's 100% false information. We did file a formal complaint with the Department of Public Instruction regarding an issue that happened with my children back in 2020. Before we filed that formal complaint, which every parent and community member has the right to do, it cost the school nothing. I would, my family doesn't take money from, we don't want money from the school. Before we did that, we did approach the school. We followed their policy. We approached the superintendent. We approached the school board. We approached everyone, and no one would speak to us. Everyone in the district received an email from the superintendent specifically telling them not to speak to my family. So it was a difficult time for us, and it still is maybe not done 100%, but there is definitely no money in exchange or any lawsuit between my family and the Ashland School District.
Thank you very much.
Do I get to speak to that? I don't know how it works when it's a question specifically.
Yeah, if you raise your hand, I can see it.
Yeah, no, I just didn't know how it works when one's directed directly to one of us. I guess all I can say to that, and I know it is an ongoing situation, but the district investigated the complaint and filed the findings and all the supporting documents with the Department of Public Instruction, and they were, DPI said there, found there was no wrongdoing on the part of the district, other than the previous superintendent should have directly interviewed their family. So when they appealed the first decision, then DPI said, do it again. So our acting superintendent investigated it again and went even further, and again, has presented that all to DPI, and DPI has again said, this is not, the claims are unfounded. The district acted the way the district should have acted. It is being appealed again, to my understanding. I know we can't say a whole lot about it. There is a great deal of time, administrative time put in, obviously, so. But I just wanted to put out what we know so far. So that's it.
Okay, I have one more follow-up question.
Do I get a chance to respond?
Kelly?
Another minute?
Yeah, you can. You might want to just have this question before you do your rebuttal. In your newspaper interview regarding your complaint against the school board, you indicated the district employees are racist. Do you feel that is an accurate statement of your belief?
Time.
And that would be one and a half minutes.
I guess I would need to see that newspaper article because I don't recall ever specifically saying someone is racist. My kids were discriminated against due to their race, I do believe. I did ask for the superintendent at that time to please provide me with another reason why my kids were treated differently than other kids and provided him with multiple examples, and he couldn't give me a reason. Do I think teachers are racist? No. I don't know anyone specific that I would say is a racist. They were treated different. I'd like an, I would like to sit at a table and someone to tell me why, and that hasn't happened yet with the school district. So that's about all I have to say about that.
Okay, you're asking for one-minute rebuttal.
Yes. So what occurred was you attempted to compare the experience of your children when it came to COVID protocols to hearsay of how other cases were handled. And what you need to understand is every case is unique and every case is confidential. So to figure, people were handled different. There's got to be a reason. Yeah, there's a reason. They're each different. They're, the county is following contact tracing. The school is following the charts, and there's different, it's laid out uniquely for each, how things are defined. And it was proven in the investigations, and all the paper, the paper trails are there that the district did follow policy in each of the cases that you tried to allege that they did not.
Yes, you have one minute.
So no one knows as much about this as myself and probably the district's attorney and our attorney. The district did not follow the same policy between other people and my children, and they aren't alleged incidences that I made up or came up with. They were direct incidences that happened in my child's classroom with friends that we know in the community, and even in the ongoing investigation. The current acting superintendent talked about documents that were sent on specific days that were never sent. So it is an ongoing investigation. It doesn't make me any less of a good candidate for the school board, nor should it be our focus of topic tonight. If anyone wants to talk to me about it, I gladly will, but we're not suing the school district. I'm ensuring that my children are treated the same as everyone else, and I will continue to do that for my kids and everyone else's kids.
Okay, thank you. I would like to have you start, Kelly, and answer the question, how would you address the systemic racism in the Ashland School District?
Time.
And it's two minutes.
Racism is everywhere, whether it's because of your sexuality, the color of your hair, the clothes that you wear, the color of your skin. It's everywhere, and it's in every, it's in every school district. I would address it by making sure that we're educated. We're educating students. We're educating community members. We're educating staff and support staff and acknowledging that it's there. That's the first step. We can't ignore it because it's everywhere. So how do we acknowledge it and train people to know how to deal with those things? And when there's racism happening, and it's continued year after year, currently what we're doing is not making a difference. So we need to reevaluate, what kind of programming are we giving to these kids? What kind of training and interaction are Native American kids having with white children or heterosexuals having with non-heterosexuals or people with blue hair having with people with brown hair? We need to just make sure that everyone is treated equal and make sure that that's what we enforce in our school district.
Thank you. And Anne, how would you address systemic racism in the Ashland School District?
Well, I think Kelly hit it on the head. It's everywhere. It's our society. It's our country. We've, just when we think we've come a long way, we have events like the last couple of years where we realize we still have so much work to do. And so we do. We all need to be more aware, more open, and have the discussions, have the dialogues. Certainly teach our children to be respectful. And we realize often, when there's things in the school and we're trying to get through to the kids, we're realizing, oh, so much of it's at home. What can we do to battle that? So it's those baby steps with each generation, and hopefully we continue to break through and creating a caring, supportive environment and getting to really know the kids, get them to really know each other. I know we've done, just specifically like with Bad River, we have so much work going on right now with that relationship with the tribe of working with the JOM Committee out there and the Education Committee, working on expanding the language offerings, trying to problem solve, how do we find people to teach in our district with the Ojibwe language program and things like that. So there is so much work going in on so many levels, and I'm really, I'm proud of the work we're doing, and we're going to just keep plugging away at it like everybody should be.
I'd like to just-
Yeah, one minute.
I do think, too, allowing some of the programming to be part of extracurricular activities would go a long way. For example, there was the Native American Drumming Group just performed at the Capitol, and that's not an extracurricular activity in our school district. It's 100% funded through the tribe. The tribe got them there. The tribe, you know, paid for their hotel stay and everything else and their meals and all of that. Well, band is an extracurricular activity, as is, should be, Native American drumming. So evening out some of those things, like this is just as important as this music, might go an extra step in ending that systemic racism that we have here.
Thank you both. And this is another question that I'm going to give one and a half minutes to each of you. How can the loss of learning that occurred during the pandemic best be addressed? And Anne, would you like to start?
Oh, that's a real easy one. There is no easy answer. And again, it's several layers, and it's one thing building on the next, and it's just a commitment to it. It's understanding And it, it's just a, a commitment to it, it's understanding the emotional, social toll this, this took on the kids. I'm not a, I'm not an education professional. So for me to, to even try and go into details on how exactly I think it should be done, that's not my job, we have amazing, amazing people in our district who are looking at it deeply and um, working on the best practices. And we're evolving how we support our teachers, how we're providing them time to work together more, more common prep time, more professional development, so they can work on a lot of the techniques that we need in this day and age. But it's just, it, it takes a lot of support. We've brought in extra people as much as we can, we've tried to hire extra people, there's a shortage, so it's not easy. But I applaud our admin for reaching out to retired teachers. We've brought in, we call them our superheroes, we've brought in retired teachers into the district. They are having a blast, they're a great influence on the kids. We've got social workers, we're trying to hire more, we've brought in deans of students. There's a, a lot being done, but it's gonna take time and everybody's gonna need to work together. It can't, it can't happen overnight.
Okay, Kelly, how can the loss against answer that question?
She was repeating the question. Oh, I asked her to repeat it, I'm sorry.
Um, for you, how can the loss of learning that has occurred during the pandemic best be addressed?
Um, it's gonna take time, it really is. And I truly believe that the best way to address it is to listen to our teachers. They're on the front line right now with kids that have been at home and never opened a Chromebook. They've been at home and seen their parents use drugs, they've been at home with no parents and taking care of their younger siblings. And the trauma that that has caused extends into the classroom. Those children that have been through that, they can't learn math, they can't learn reading at the rate they're expected to because they're dealing with all these other issues that COVID brought into their life. And we need to, I feel, we need to take a step back and look at, I know the, the school district is on a strategic plan, but there are more ways to get to one destination. And we may have to step aside and say, you know what? We do need smaller classes so that we can address the needs of these students. My son's class has 25 kids in it, there's no way one teacher can do all of that and catch these kids back up. And I think we really need to dig in, listen to what our teachers need and then have them work with our administration because we have wonderful teachers and good administration. And they need to work together and listen to each other to come up with the best plan because they are the experts.
One minute.
All right, thank you. I totally support smaller class sizes when it's practical and when we're able to do it. But it's been proven that small class size without changing the delivery of our instruction, our, our instruction methods is ineffective. This is why specifically in the COVID relief funding, they said you can't just use this to lower class sizes if you don't also incorporate new instructional techniques. So it has to go hand in hand, it can't be a, a standalone thing. That's why they switched away from the Sage program, which used to just lower class size in the lowest elementary levels, to a combination of instructional coaching and lower class sizes so that our teachers are learning the latest instructional techniques because that's been proven time and again now to actually have meaningful change. I wish that just having fewer students would work, but it doesn't. So we need to use our resources to change the techniques as well.
And Kelly, one minute rebuttal.
I, I hear Anne, I hear what Anne's saying and I do understand that there are guidelines with COVID relief money and teachers need to learn the latest techniques. However, the district just purchased an ELA curriculum from 2015. I don't believe that's the latest teaching technique. So, and you can do both, you can teach the teachers new things and you can have lower class sizes. And that's exactly what our kids need and what they deserve.
Thank you, I have a follow-up question that's somewhat similar. And you each have a minute and a half and I'm gonna start with you, Kelly. How would you find ways to retain staff that have years of experience and skills but may be thinking or reporting on leaving the district?
And how much time do I have?
A minute and a half.
I would listen to them, I can't say that enough. I feel like our, we're losing phenomenal teachers and there has to be a reason why. It, it, are we doing exit interviews, are we evaluating those exit interviews? I don't know, I'm not on the school board at this point. But there has to be a reason that they're leaving. My ch- my children have never had a bad teacher, they're phenomenal. They're, I, I can't say enough good things about them. But right now I know they feel un- unlistened to, unappreci- underappreciated and we need to hear what they have to say, they are with these kids every day. We won't lose teachers if we listen to what they have to say and help them to reach the goals that they have for these students. That's where we have to start. And again, again with the getting together, I'm getting these teachers together and just hearing their ideas and moving forward with, with them, they have wonderful ideas, they're wonderful educators. And we have to treat them as such in order to keep them here.
And Anne, I'd ask you the same question. How would you find ways to retain staff that have the years of experience and skills but may be thinking or reporting on leaving the district?
It's, in some ways it's a loaded question because everybody's losing teachers, everybody's losing administrators. The strain on them from COVID, it's, people are leaving education. People are, they're jumping districts, people are coming to our district from other districts, people are losing, everybody, they want change, they want something new, it's not necessarily something we're specifically doing. This recurring theme that, or implication that we're not listening to teachers. There is a lot of group work that happens in our district. And we need to hear from, and I've heard from, the teachers that believe in what we're doing and do feel listened to. But they have, they need to listen as well, so it needs to be a cooperative effort. They need to be open to growth and to learn, they need to have the growth mindset we want our, our kids to have. And, and it's not easy. Um, I do know some of the things we have done to retain them. We've retained post-retirement benefits after Act 10 that a lot of places did away, away with. We've supported, consistently supported staying on our, our salary schedule with more of the CPI requirement than CPI requirements. We've added positions to support them, like I talked about, deans of students, district psychologists, social workers. We've done two rounds of stipends during COVID to recognize and thank those veteran teachers for sticking with us.
Thank you. I have a one-minute question for each of you. And I'll start with you, Anne. Do you see a value in exit interviews for employees leaving the district? Do you see a value in making these available?
Yes and no, I, I, I think that it's always good to hear what people have to say. Like anything, you have to be able to put it in perspective. You have to be able to try and understand the whole picture. I am, I am fine with, with exit interviews as long as we're able to ask and find both sides of, of the, of the equation, how the people are, what they're thinking. To just have exit interviews, yeah, some, a, a lot of people that leave write us these letters thanking us for the opportunity. And often they're leaving to be closer to family or for other personal reasons. And yeah, there's always gonna be people that'll leave any job that are gonna have things they're upset about. And we should hear it, but we also need to put it, be willing to put it in perspective.
And for you, Kelly, um, do you see a value in exit interviews for employees leaving the district? Do you see a value in making these available?
I 100% believe in exit interviews and I do see a value in making them available. Um, it allows the school board and administration to hear what that person has to say. Maybe there is something that's being missed and that person is going to bring it to light. Maybe we might learn something new from them. Um, and it also gives them the opportunity to let them, let, just to feel, feel like they were heard. If they've given us years of service to our students and our community, we at least owe them that to listen to what they have to say. And I, I, I agree with Anne, you, you can't believe everything you hear or just take it, you know, to heart. But exit interviews are always good to hear what someone has to say. And it is good to look into if there's anything that might perk up your ears and be like, huh, I didn't know that was happening. That's a great way to find out.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, I have a one-minute question for each of you. And I'll start with you, Kelly. What is your position on adding a civics course to the Ashland High School graduation requirements?
Well, I didn't know they were thinking about adding a civics course. I don't have anybody in high school yet, I, I guess I would need to do a little investigating into why or why we're adding it or if, is it mandatory, is it needed? I'm not sure, so I really, I can't give a good answer on that question. But if I am on the board, if I am elected onto the board, I will, I'll find an answer or learn why we're having a civics, why they're adding a civics course or not adding a civics course, however it goes. I'll find out, but I don't know at this moment.
Okay, and the same for you, one minute, Anne. What is your position on adding a civics course to the Ashland High School graduation requirements?
I'm as stumped as Kelly is, this, this is the first I've heard of it and I guess I'm not even positive what all we're doing right now, I mean, I know my, my son just graduated, my ha- my daughter's in, in hi- in high school right now. You know, they've had social side studies classes and do some civics through that, you know, I, I guess I'm not sure where the person is coming from on the question and what they're really looking for. I defer to our curriculum department to, you know, if, if there's some standards we need to be meeting, then by all means, bring it on, present it, we'll support it, it's, but yeah, it's, I.
Okay, thank you very much. This is a one-minute question, um, and I'll start with you, Anne. Should the school set aside time for prayer during the school day?
My goodness. Another one out of left field. I'm not sure quite how to answer that, you know, I, I think that, I don't know that we would specifically set aside time for prayer. I do think setting aside time for some mental health, some meditation in whatever form that might be for our students, for our teachers, I think would be incredibly healthy. I know that we've been increasingly trying to teach mindfulness and to me that kind of falls within the same category on how it can, the, um, help people get through their day. So to specifically get into prayer, I mean, ti- time to reflect and be mindful, certainly.
Okay, and for you, Kelly, should school set aside time for prayer during the school day?
Um, I don't necessarily know that I would label it as prayer time. I think some families pray, some families don't pray and that's, you know, 100% their decision. I do know that my, um, the children do do mindfulness every day because my kids have taught me about it and what they do. So I think when that time comes, if you are a parent and you wish your child to pray during that time or your child wants to pray, absolutely they can, you know, kneel down, sit down, go to, in another area, whatever they want to do and say a prayer if they want. But I don't think that it's something you can ask the entire school, class, district to do. I think that's each family's decision.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, um, this is a question for both of you and it's a one-minute question. And I'll start with you, Kelly. I know that traveling basketball teams have to pay for gym practice time and for their equipment. They are Ashland's future, what is your opinion of this? Even though the coaches use their own time for free?
Can we get a minute, minute and a half?
Um, a minute, it can be a minute and a half.
Okay. My opinion of it is, um, I guess I would like to learn a little bit more about the reasoning for it. As a co- community member, taxpayer, I was just one of those volunteer coaches that volunteered my time for an entire season yet paid to use the field house. And I will say it's frustra- it, it was a little frustrating and I did have a lot of questions as to why. We only have Ashland students, why, why are we paying to use this facility? But I understand that, um, there are reasons why the board came up with that and I would be willing to hear those. However, when this facility was built and, um, we passed the referendum, I do think it needs to be, something needs to be looked at because the thought was that the children in our district, the students, would be able to use these facilities at no cost.
And the same question to you, Anne, um, one and a half minutes. I know that traveling basketball teams have to pay for gym practice time and for their equipment. They are Ashland's future, what is your opinion of this even though coaches use their own time for free?
My opinion is, and my knowledge is, we have many youth sports programs that use our facilities. And as a district, we have to cover the utilities and the maintenance, the janitorial. So there are expenses involved with that. When people say to me, well, I'm a taxpayer, my kids should be able to, to use everything for free, I say, all the taxpayers have already paid for our facilities. Should they really be playing, paying for my kid to play a sport? I don't know, it's a tough call, I mean, these kids are our future sports teams. But it's also a, a choice. I think the fees we're charging are pretty reasonable for what we're getting, especially having had a child play on a club team in a different city. And the cost was five times as much just to be in the club. People in other cities are paying thousands of dollars for their kids to play youth sports. And I know, you know, economics are tough here, but we still have pretty low costs for everything we do. I think we can be more creative with a lot of sponsorship opportunities. But I think the district has to be responsible in how we care for and support our facilities and we do need to, to have, we do need to charge for them. Okay, thank you.
Yes, um, Kelly, one minute.
I, I just want to comment that I do think, um, from my understanding, from when I was coaching and questioning, if you're, it was because you're a, you know, you're not part of the district. I do think our district could focus more on maybe starting these kids younger. We don't start school affiliated basketball till seventh grade. Most schools start it younger, if we could get it school affiliated and run by our school sooner than that, it would give our kids more opportunity and then there wouldn't be that cost. We do have, we are a poor community, we live, most of our community is below the federal poverty level. In order to get those kids participating and out of maybe bad homes where parents are using drugs or there's abuse or something and into these pro- into these extracurricular activities, we do have to keep the cost very low or no cost. And getting it under the Ashland School District rather than a, a club or travel team would be in the best interest for all of our students.
Okay, um, Anne?
And.
One minute.
In, in an ideal world, it would all be free and we would have it. And in, in an ideal world, it would all be free and we would have it all down to very young ages. But just having it under the umbrella of the district doesn't make it free, it means it costs the district. So we have to prioritize what can we afford to support. And it's, it's not easy to even support the levels of the sports we have now. And I would love to, I dreamed of being able to start them all younger. But we have to be able to find the balance of what the district can afford also to make it happen. And I'm certainly hoping to trying to find ways to expand all of our programs, whether it's band, drama, you name it. But it's, it doesn't just happen. It's not that easy, unfortunately.
Do I have a chance to say?
Yes, one minute.
I guess, I, I hear what Ann's saying, but when I read pa, read newspaper articles and see that we magically came up with two hundred thousand dollars to pay out a superintendent to leave our district, I can't imagine that we can't find a little bit of money to let the elementary school kids play basketball in our gym. Just because of, just because we have to have the lights on or the janitor clean there. I, that to me doesn't sit well. So as a community member, parent of students, I, I find that very hard to believe. There, the mu, we, we can get it under the district somehow. They find ways for, to find money for other things.
Ann, if you want to hold your rebuttal, I have a question that is directly.
Okay.
And I'll start by asking you and you can have a now, a minute and a half. Where do you stand on the school board's decision to basically pay Eric Olson to go away?
Interesting way to word it. First of all, I, I've got a prepared statement for this just because I need to be careful what we say. And I'll explain that right here. So privacy laws and state statute dictate that personnel issues and contract negotiations be discussed in closed session. There's very little information the board can share without getting ourselves and the district sued. Secondly, administrative contracts are essentially two years out. This is what most people don't understand. As the school year progresses, each administrator is under contract for the following year and the board decides in January if we're going to roll them over for the year after that. So they're out of ways. What I can share with what happened with Mr. Olson is COVID-19 created an incredibly unique situation with rapidly evolving demands on our staff and our administration. Throughout this ordeal, one thing was clear. To get through this and build a strong foundation moving forward, it was going to take a healthy relationship with our staff and community. We needed someone who was willing to immerse themselves in our community, to truly understand us and our staff and what we need to be successful. We needed a relationship builder and that was not a strength of Mr. Olson. In fact, what we saw was a growing disconnect that was creating a great deal of stress on our staff. So the board and Mr. Olson agreed it would be best to part ways. To me, the separation was actually a show of support for the rest of our staff and administration. He was already under contract, that money was already spent. But we recognized that the stress that was being placed by not having the strong relationship with our community, it had to be done. Words can't express my gratitude to our interim superintendent Chris Petrito for guiding us through this year and re-establishing a positive supportive schoolwork culture.
Thank you. Question to you Kelly, where do you stand on the school board's decision to basically pay Eric Olson to go away?
I, as a community member and taxpayer, I'm irritated, to say the least, that there's no explanation. I also look, look at it from a little bit of just different perspective. I have seen the district, I, I guess demote maybe is the word, that they've already had under contract. Take that person and say, you know what, we don't want you for this job anymore. You're still under contract, but we're going to put you in a classroom and you're going to teach X, Y, Z because you are an educator and we're already paying you, so that's what we're going to do. So we already had Eric Olson under contract, so he wasn't cutting it as the superintendent, okay. But he's an educator, he's a superintendent. Why didn't we keep him here? We just, we're in the middle of COVID pandemic, we're hiring back other educators? We had him here. Put him in a classroom, let him work with kids. Why did we just release him? As a community member and a parent, that does not sit well with me. We've done it to other admin, why didn't we do it to him?
One minute.
I guess my thought would be, I don't know that I know anybody who would want their child taught by, you really think we could take a superintendent and put them in a classroom and not have a whole lot of tension? I, I just can't imagine that atmosphere. Like I said in, in my statement, what happened was a, a, a growing divide and our staff needed the show of support from our board to say, we need to part ways. It is, it, it is the best thing that we could do to show our support. And the instant improvement in the culture within our buildings, when Chris Petrito came on and recreated a positive atmosphere, was well worth everything we've had to go through and that's it.
One minute.
I still have to stand strong and maybe a classroom wasn't ideal. But I was told by a principal in the district that he's the smartest man he's ever met. Eric Olson was the smartest man he had ever met. And so I'm thinking, we have this smart man, there had to have been something he could have done. We, we need playground aids, kids are getting beat up daily. Stick them on the playground. I don't really care what you do with them, but you're already paying them six figures. Put them to work. Don't just let them go. You handed them money and let them walk away. That, that, I, I don't support that.
Okay, thank you. I have a new question now for both of you. And I believe I start with you Ann. So I would start with Kelly. Most colleges no longer require entrance exams such as ACT or SAT. Should the district set aside time to administer those exams?
Time?
One minute.
I think if there's any colleges or technical colleges or, gosh, I can't even think of what other kids go to nowadays. I haven't been in college in years. But if there's any of those schools that still require the SAT and the ACT, then I think as a district, we probably should look into setting aside, a time, setting time aside for that. Because we may have a few students that need to take them, if that is the case. If there was no colleges or no universities or no community colleges that even look at that, then I would say no. But if there are some, we should, we can set aside, we should set aside time for those kids to take those tests, absolutely.
Okay, and the same question to you Ann. Most colleges no longer require entrance exams such as the ACT or the SAT. Should the district set aside time to administer these exams?
Well, if I'm not mistaken, I don't think it's changed in the last year. I think we're still required to give the ACT. It's one of the exams that the state uses for the state report cards and as a progress monitor of how districts are do, are doing. So, I mean, we, we have to do it. I'm proud of the way we do it, that we are actually having only the junior class in the building on the day that we administer it so that the kids can truly focus, so that they can be spread out and supported. And it's, it's all about them and that test on that day. This year, it was really cool that the district offered some, helped facilitate some ski trips for the other classes. So, I mean, we need to do it and we found a way to do it in a, in a supportive manner and I'm proud of that.
Okay, thank you. Another question, and I'll start with you Ann. What are your thoughts about implementing a K through twelve Ojibwe language program for all students?
Is Ann Chardier here, where is she? Hi Ann.
And it has a second part to it.
Sorry.
And considering that twenty-five percent of the district are American Indians, being from Bad River, do you know any Ojibwe words?
Time?
I'll give one and a half minutes.
All right. I had to shout out to Ann Chardier because she's been coming religiously to our board meetings and speaking to this each month for a while now. And I do appreciate her, her passion, certainly. What words do I know? Boujou, migwich, I think that's probably about it. I don't know if we're ready for K-12 Ojibwe language in the schools as a strict part of our curriculum. But I do firmly believe we can do, be doing a lot more than we are. That we should be having, you know, kind of bits and pieces worked in throughout our schools and teaching more and more of the culture. And I think that as we're doing all of our curriculum review work, which I know we're doing, we are adding more. And like I said before somewhere, I have a list of all the, the great work that we're doing with members of the Bad River Tribe and their education committee to expand it all. So yes, there's a lot more we can do. And I'm excited to see where we, where we take it all. And I know personally, I've expanded my horizons since I've been on the board to be a lot more open to it as well. As a parent, I didn't used to be that open to it and I've, I've been doing a lot of reading and trying to really open my mind and, yeah. I think we can do more and I'm excited to see what we come up with.
Thank you. Kelly, what are your thoughts about implementing a K through twelve Ojibwe language program for all students, considering that twenty-five percent of the district is American Indian? And do you know any Ojibwe words?
I do know some Ojibwe words. Boujou, migwich. The number one we, one we use at our house with my kids is gawin, which is no. So that comes out a lot. But our, everybody hunts wawa skechi in November during hunting season. And my favorite one is wawa biganogee. And we laugh about this at home all the time because wawa biganogee is actually a mouse. So I'm always like, there's this huge word for this little tiny creature. So we do laugh about that one. But gawin is definitely my fa, favorite at the Madi House. I, I do think we need to do better at implementing a K-12 Ojibwe language program. I have been a big pusher for this. My children love speaking the language, they love drumming, they love everything about their culture. And we don't, we don't have it. My son, who's in seventh grade, had it when he was younger, kindergarten, first, second, maybe even third. My fifth grader now hasn't had it in three years and doesn't remember a lot of it, so we have to try to do it at home. I think it's important and it's, it's important with the systemic racism for, for this to be there so that everyone understands these words are not just something made up. They are part of this culture and they are the same as Spanish or anything else to these students that are in the Ashland School District.
Okay. I have a follow-up question on that. It's one minute for each of you. And I'll start with you Kelly. What are your thoughts on not offering any Ojibwe language for pre-K to five the last three years?
It stinks. I know we've had, a little bit has been due to COVID and I, and I do understand that. But I do think we can put forth a better effort in finding, you know, Ojibwe language instructor to come in and do that. It's an opportunity that we have to provide for our kids. Twenty-five percent of our popu, population is Native American. And the Native American children, as well as other children, as well as white children, they want to learn, they want to learn the culture. Some find it fascinating. I find it fascinating and I'm not Native American. So it, it bothers me that we haven't had it and we haven't put faith, put forth a real hard effort to bring it back. And I, I hope that we can do that in the future.
And for you Ann, what are your thoughts on not offering any Ojibwe language for pre-K through five for the last three years?
Well, again, like I said, I'm super proud of the efforts that we're currently putting in. We, we recognize it, we're working on it, we're trying to expand it. There are weekly meetings happening between our curriculum director and folks out at Bad River. We're trying to recruit a second Ojibwe language teacher. We're working on short-term and long-terming programming work with members of the language group out there. Our district equity team has Bad River members attend and plan with district leaders. So we're doing the work. It's, there are no instant fixes and you have to do it in combination with all these other things that we're trying to bring up to date. And yeah, we, we need to expand it, certainly. And we've got people passionately working very hard on it.
Okay, thank you. So I have a new question here and I'll start with you Ann. Should the graphic novel, novel Mouse by Art Spiegelman be banned at the high school? And what about book banning? I have one point five.
I have to admit, I'm not familiar with that particular graphic novel. I know there are, there's lots of discussions now about banning different books. No, I don't believe books should be banned. I think that books are a great way to expand our, our worldview. And especially when, when I see people trying to ban books that were written a couple generations ago because they have some reference in them that's considered racist. Well, instead of covering that up, we need to read it and learn from it and acknowledge that that's not an okay worldview anymore. It, it just, it, it does boggle my mind, some of the different things that are being banned. I guess I can't speak specifically to, to that book because I'm not familiar with it. But I, I think, you really have to think long and hard before you would ever ban any book because I think they lead to healthy discussions, whether it's what not to do, what to do. They're insightful as to where we have been at different places in our history. Sometimes they're enlightening to people that think in ways that it's, it's hard to fathom. But we need to know that, that thinking is out there.
Okay, and the same question to you for a minute and a half.
Can you read it again?
Should the graphic novel Mouse by Art Spiegelman be banned at the high school? And what about book banning?
Gosh. Well, first of all, I don't, I'm not a reader, I'm going to just admit it. I have three kids and I work full-time and I, if I have time to read, I'm taking a nap, I'm not reading. But I do believe every kid should read. My ki, I, I, I encourage it, but if it's not Pete the Cat at my house, we're not reading it right now and I don't know what the book mouse is. Book banning, I, I don't know. I mean, I think if you ban a book from the school, they're just going to go find it on eBooks or, you know, Amazon or wherever other people buy books. My mom reads books on this, on her thing, on her Kindle or whatever. I'm sure they can find it there. So I don't really know that banning books is going to really stop people from reading them if they're out there. If there's a reason for banning it, maybe that's a topic that we need to have in a classroom and educate the students about it rather than just push it under the rug and pretend it's not there.
Thank you. New question and I'll start with you Kelly. Do you approve of the use of freedom of information for the public to legally receive information held by the school district? Time? Ann, that's two minutes.
Can you repeat that, I'm sorry?
Repeat it.
Do you approve of the use of freedom of information for the public to legally receive information held by the school district?
I'm assuming that means like, and I'm assuming here, like an open records request, a freedom to request that. And yeah, I absolutely believe in that one hundred percent. Um, and yeah, I absolutely believe in that one hundred percent. Um, I don't think there's anything that should go on in the district that we're trying to hide from the people that pay our taxes or are the parents of the kids that we take care of, that this district has in their possession, you know, eight hours a day. Um, I think parents and community members do deserve to know that and I absolutely believe that there should be open records laws and requests and we should be, and this district should have to provide them, absolutely.
Okay, same question to you, Ann. Do you approve of the use of freedom of information for the public to legally receive information held by the school district?
I'm chuckling a little bit because as you read the question the first time, I was watching the faces in the audience and everybody's kinda like, well, yeah, well, how would you not? And that's, that's the answer. I mean, it's, we have laws, we have freedom of information. Yeah, you're, you give it out when it's requested, the things that are legal. I mean, you have to understand, not everything is accessible and that's, you know, we have laws that guide it all, but yes, there's, it is what it is, certainly.
Okay, thank you. Um, there uh is another question here that I'm gonna give you each two minutes because it's kind of a long one. Um, can I start with you?
You started with me.
It's my turn to go first.
Yes, your turn to go first. Again, there has been an increase in mental health and behavioral issues at the schools. How can we address the increasing mental health needs of our students?
And it, it's a multi-level system of support, to use one of the, the terms that I'll, that's out there. There are just, there's so many layers to it. Um, we've brought in um psychologists, we're bringing in social workers. We're doing trainings with all of our staff to be able to recognize and, and deal with the issues that, that the kids are going through. Um, it, we're, I can't even describe all. I think it, we've, it, we've been presented it so many times, I can't even list all the, the things that we're doing. I just am confident that we're doing. We know we need these supports. We know there's a lot of mental health issues. And we're throwing everything at them we possibly can. And the biggest barrier, honestly, is finding enough, um, being able to hire enough people to do it. We have resources to do a lot of it, but it, it's finding the professionals to do it. But the commitment is there, the acknowledgement is there that we need the supports and um we're doing everything that we possibly can at this moment and we just keep, keep doing more.
Okay, thank you. And you, Kelly. There has been an increase in mental health and behavioral issues at the schools. How can we address the increasing mental health needs of our students?
Um, obviously, I'm not the expert in mental health, but we do have experts out there. I do see the increase in the behaviors and I do see the need for definite help. We need help for our teachers. Um, I had a friend of mine who was a teacher and, in tears a few weeks ago and said, I'm, I feel like I'm in a psychiatric ward sometimes and I'm not trained to deal with this. And it kinda really hit home for me because we need people that, in our district, that can ha, help these children. Not just for the teachers, but for these kids. Um, these, these kids have s- severe behavior and issues from dealing with COVID and everything they went through in these last two years. And maybe it happened prior to that, I don't know. But I think it's time that everybody put their heads together and come up with a better idea because whatever's been implemented so far this year is not working. There are behaviors every single day and when you do call and talk to the people in charge, you know, you say, well, they say, well, we have things in place, we have interventions in place. Okay, but this is the fifth time this child has beat up a kid on the playground, or this is the sixth time that we've evacuated a first grade class due to one child, we gotta, we gotta do something different. Like, this is not okay. We have kids with anxiety to come to school because of what's happening in their classroom. I don't have the answer, but I guarantee if we get every teacher and every administrative, administrative position and school board members and community board members together, we can probably come up with some solutions.
Okay.
I, I just, I just wanna reiterate and that there aren't instant easy solutions for sure. Um, but we are doing universal social emotional screening for all the kids. There's a lot of small groups in place now for students who struggle. We've added deans of students in each of the buildings to, to help with a lot of it. Um, is it enough? I, I don't know that it'll ever be enough, but we're adding as fast as we can and trying to get the supports there and the trainings um to help everybody deal with it. Um, we recently, um, Chris Patrito, our current superintendent, has again been reaching out to more retired folks from whether they're uh other district administrators that are retired. Um, just try, reaching out in many ways to try and find other people to help. And um, we're getting there, but it, it's not easy to find the people and the commitment's definitely there.
And Kelly, one minute?
I have no doubt that the district is trying to find ways to fix this. I, I, I truly don't. Um, everyone that works here cares about our kids and I, I have no doubt in that. Um, but I do think there could be some more creative ideas. I mean, I know myself as a parent, I know there's other parents, grandparents probably sitting out here right now that if they knew how bad things are right now in our district with bullying and mental health and behavior issues and kids falling behind, if we put out a, if we put something out saying, we need help, we need parents to come sit up, stand on the playground, we need parents to come read with these kids, we need parents to do these math facts, grandparents, take the background check, come in, come see what's happening, be a part of, be a part of our school, be a part of the community. They will do it. We have a fundraiser in this town and it, there are people that come out of the woodwork and we can do that here, too.
Okay. Um, this is the final question and um it's a one and a half minute question for each of you. And I'll start with you, Kelly. How will you advocate for all students?
Um, I will, well, from our former conversation, clearly I advocate a lot. Um, I, I don't, I won't stop. I'm, I'm a person that, um, if something isn't right, it's not right. If people are lying, it's not okay. And I, I don't let it rest until we get to the bottom of it. Um, clearly, what happened with my children, do people know my daughter didn't go to school for months, had to go to counseling, cried every day? My family had to go to counseling. No. And I, I won't stop. I, we had threatening phone calls, threatening emails, horrible things said to us. And yeah, there were days I wanted to quit, but I'm not. I, I don't believe in that. And I will advocate for my own kids and every other kid in our community. And no matter what happens, I will not stop advocating for them. And if me standing up for my own kids doesn't prove that, I don't know how else I can other than for you to elect me to the school board and I will prove to you that I will advocate for every single kid in this district.
Thank you. And you, Ann. How will you advocate for all students?
I advocate for all students by trying to put, support the best systems that, that we can pro, possibly put in place. Um, it's, it's such a broad, broad question. I mean, just by being a school board member, we're advocating for the students. We're advocating for what's best for our, our community. Um, it, it all has to be part of the big picture. It, it all has to fit together. Um, we're all so passionate about the kids. Every, like you said, like Kelly said before, everybody cares about the kids. We're, we're all advocating for the kids. We have to make sure that in doing that, we, we have to make sure we're willing to embrace change and grow and be open to new ways of supporting all of our kids and truly listen to what's out there for them and how we can best support them. Um, I don't know, it's, it's a, it's an in, interesting way to, to pose the question quite, quite honestly. I wouldn't be here if I wasn't advocating what's best for the kids. It's.
Um, and you, Kelly, a one-minute rebuttal.
Um, and I don't really know that this is a rebuttal. I don't disagree with anything Ann said, but I do, um, I do know that the school board meetings I have listened to, I have seen some school board members or community members ask, try to ask some questions. Um, specifically, I've seen school board members try to ask some hard questions. And I've seen them almost um like talked down to by some of our other school board members and kinda pushed down. And I, I, I don't like that. Um, they're trying to advocate and they're not being allowed to be heard. Um, things that they've asked to be put on the agenda, they're not being allowed to be put on there. And I am one that will continue, will always ask hard questions and will continue to ask hard questions whether it's uncomfortable or not. Um, so I can guarantee if I'm elected to the board, that won't happen with me there.
And one minute for you, Ann, in rebuttal.
It, there's a very fine line when we say ask hard questions or um push for things to be put on the agenda. Agendas are set with reflection on our strategic plan and where we're at with our, our plans, our vision for the district. We, i- if we veered off every time somebody brought back a concern, it, it may be something from months ago that we've already reviewed and we've decided on, we've got a system in place, then it's something that gets reviewed on a yearly basis, then that's when we're gonna review it. We're not gonna, obviously, if there's some huge pressing issue, yes, it, it'll be discussed, but we can't fall down the rabbit hole of veering off in different directions because we'll, we'll never get anywhere. We'll struggle to focus.
Um, and one minute for you, Kelly.
Um, I do, I, do we, do I get a minute to rebuttal? Um, I don't have to if that's, if it's, if it's out of your guidelines.
Yeah, I, I didn't wanna cut off any positive debate for our audience here. But um, anyway, we are at the end of the questions, so if you wanna just hold off because we're going to allow you to have um your closing remarks and then you can just include your answer in the closing remarks.
Oh, that's all right. I'll just do my.
Okay. Um, we've had a lot of really good and tough questions and we really appreciate you um um taking the time to think through the answers to them here. Um, our goal was to read questions on a variety of topics so that the audience has a good sense of who each of you are as candidates. So, I wanna thank the audience first and all of the people who are watching virtually and thank you both as candidates for participating. This is a little bit of a hot seat. So, um, now it's time for us to hear your one-minute closing remarks. And um, help me, the reverse order was you went first.
I went first, so she's first.
So, you go first, Kelly.
Okay. Um, since I'm an Ashland alum, my husband's an Ashland alum, we've been in the district for a long time. Um, since my kids started in the Ashland School District and I then became a parent of school district kids, I've seen really great things in the district and I've seen not-so-great things. Um, in today's age, um, with technology, cell phones, Chromebooks, all those fun things and then add in COVID, which threw everybody for a loop, um, there's a lot of problems and issues in our district. Um, and I know that there's a lot of good ideas out there, whether it be from parents, community members, teachers, administration, students probably have some good ideas. Um, I will be the voice for those students, teachers, admin, um, community members and I'll be the voice for everyone in the Ashland School District to solve those problems.
Thank you. And Ann, one minute, closing remarks.
I wish I had written it down, but I've got so many thoughts running around. Um, the reason I do, I'm on the school board, the reason I do so many of the things I do is because I love our community. I believe in our community and I believe in the potential of our community. I had a friend share um a thing about the different types of educators and the, the ones we're trying to get people to be are believers. These are the people that embrace change, self-reflection, they possess a determination to personally contribute to improvement, leading to student outcomes. In healthy cultures, these people have the most influence. Unfortunately, in Ashland, in our community, in tiny pockets in our district, we have what are called the fundamentalists, the people that just kinda stick back and they're stuck in their ways and they're not open to that growth. And that's the number one thing holding our district and our community back is, is the negativity, that we can't, we can't, we can't, and all the excuses. We need to all believe and that's the number one factor in improving student achievement and that's what I support.
Okay, thank you. Um, you've heard Ann Bockler and Kelly Mede. They're both candidates for the Ashland School Board. Uh, the election is next Tuesday, April 5th. Please vote. Um, thanks again to all the people who organized the forum and to your audience, both at home, watching on Zoom, and to those who came out tonight on what was kind of a crummy night. Um, so, thank you also to the students who um helped us from Ashland High School. We greatly appreciate your participation. We hope it was interesting, you participated. Uh, so, thank you all and good night.
Good job, Kelly. Thanks.
Forty-eight people.